I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting of March the 6th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to do a little housekeeping for our transcriptionist. All board members are here this evening except Ms. Witt. And also present this evening is Mr. Welch, Building Inspector, Mr. Atkins, Fire Inspector, and Mr. Krogan, Planning Board Attorney. All right. First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes, except the minutes for February the 2nd, February, excuse me, February 7th, 2024. I need a motion, Mr. Madden, Mr. Brito, have a second discussion?
Um, I was not here, so I'll...
That's fine.
Okay.
Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Witt? No, she's absent. Sorry. And Ms. Houston?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
I didn't want to.
I watched.
First of all, we want to point out that anyone here for the first time, first appearance is considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. All right, moving forward. New business. Approval of expanded liquor license for 9 King Street. Please step forward, anyone representing 9 King Street. Good evening, sir.
Hi, sir.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm Mark Conaura.
And what do you plan on doing?
I've planned to get the full liquor license. Right now I have only the wine and beer license.
Correct. Yes, the gentleman is here just this evening to expand his liquor license. He has beer and wine, and he wants to move on to a full liquor license. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
Nothing.
Anyone on the phone?
No.
Okay, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Back to the public for any comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Brito, motion, and second, Mr. McCormick. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing, public hearing is closed. I'll go to the board one more time. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, fine. On the, for the resolution, approval of an expanded liquor use, liquor license for 9 King Street. I need a motion. Mr. McCormick, I need a second. Mr. Brito, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yeah.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take care. Next on the agenda, approval of a special use permit and site plan for a beauty salon at 130 Wickham Avenue.
How are you?
Good. Yourself?
Good, thank you.
Good. Please state your name for the record.
Rosa Moscada.
And what you plan on doing?
Um, well, I already have a beauty bar on 30 North Street, so I'm just relocating to make another beauty bar.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'll move to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Nothing? Okay, I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone? Mr. Atkins?
The location of 30 North is closing?
Yes.
And you're relocating?
Yes. Yep, yep.
Okay. Public hearing is still open. Anyone wishing to speak on the application? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing. God bless you. Mr. Higby, motion, second. Mr. McCormick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. I'll move to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thereon, any concerns?
No concerns.
Walter, any concerns?
Okay. Okay, on the resolution for approval of a special use permit and site plan for a beauty salon at 130 Wickham Avenue, I need a motion. Mr. Higby, I need a second. Ms. Houston, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt, do you want to vote on?
Sure.
Okay, 130 Wickham Avenue.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the record for the transcriptionist, Ms. Witt is now present.
I apologize for my weakness.
Next on the agenda, approval of a special use permit and site plan approval for a spa at 11 Center Street.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Please state your name for the record.
Jenny Hurtaz.
And what do you plan on doing?
I plan on relocating from 90 North Street to 11 Center Street. And nothing changes, just my locale by half a block, but necessary evil, right?
Good to see you sticking around.
[laughing]
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Do we have anyone on the telephone? Anything in writing?
No.
All right, I'm going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. None. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Madden, need a second. Mr. Brito, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. I'll move to the board one more time for any question, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
I have no concerns.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you.
On the resolution, approval of a special use permit and site plan for a spa at 11 Center Street, I need a motion. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Mr. Higby, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a preliminary hearing, which is preliminary only for this evening, not only, not for any action, but for future presentation and possible action at a date not yet determined. Preliminary is for 183 Dulson Avenue. How you doing this evening?
Good evening. Beautiful night for a hearing.
Yes, wonderful. Please state your name for the record.
Nice and wet.
Yeah.
Sandburn, with Bowler Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC, here tonight to introduce a new 7,000 square foot retail automotive center, or retail auto parts store. The current site that we're looking at is 183 Dulson Avenue in the city. We are at this corner lot where you can see we have the shared access adjacent Monroe Muffler, across from, I think it's Compass Volkswagen. And the site is currently undeveloped. It's a vacant, just grass and a couple light poles out there, no, no infrastructure, no leftover remains from any previous development that can be seen. The site is currently zoned C3 general business, and the, again, the applicant is proposing a 7,000 square foot retail auto parts store. So, the existing site is a little funky when you look at it. You have this shared access that runs through our property, the property in question that services Middletown Commons. Drove out there today, seems like the road's in decent shape, but people are, you know, using it to get out, so it is being shared. Monroe has their, has a curb cut there. The site actually has, based on our topographic survey that we pulled, a 25-foot shared access easement to the city of Middletown on our site, and then another 25-foot shared access easement off our site for a total of 50 feet. So, it looks like at some time, there may have been a road proposed there, but we're working with DPW and city staff to hopefully dissolve that easement and relocate it over Abe. I'm going to mispronounce that, so I'm just...
Isaac's.
Isaac's? Okay, I've been saying Isaac's, so I apologize. But, and hopefully extend that across the remainder of the property. So, our actual proposed rendered site plan, if I got it the right way, again, 7,000 square foot O'Reilly Auto Parts. You might be hearing they're coming to this area, not a strong foothold right now, but they're coming to the area. We have associated parking, landscaping, trash, trash enclosure, load and unload zone, landscaping and stormwater area. So, the site as proposed right now has 35 spaces. That's typical for an O'Reilly's this size. The site is just over an acre, but we're proposing to disturb just under an acre. So, that would get rid of any quality mitigation required by DEC, and we would just be required to capture and detain the stormwater on site and release that in the same conveyance pattern at a lesser rate than pre-development. So, the site itself slopes from Dulson Avenue down towards, I believe it's the New Wonders Learning Facility down there. And there's actually a pretty significant grade change from Dulson to the rear of our site. So, the entirety of our back wall and then another 50 feet beyond that through the pavement areas, essentially a five-foot retaining wall. So, we're working with the architect and the structural engineer on that. Stormwater on the site is being collected and captured in a series of catch basins and grass swale. We try and get that water into the grass as soon as possible to promote infiltration across the site. And then, it's captured and detained here with a riprap outlet. As far as utilities for the site, based on our survey that we have right now, we're aware of water, electric, or I'm sorry, sewer, electric, gas are all available on our side of the street in the Dulson Ave right away. Water is, from what it appears, is in the middle of Dulson Avenue. So, we're going to work with DPW to get whatever required permits we may need for our electric, gas, water, sewer. As far as, you know, what we're here tonight for, just, client is excited to develop the store in the city. We are just here to get some feedback and introduce the project. Understand that a vote is up to you tonight, but if anything, we would really appreciate it if we could, the board could declare lead agency and hopefully start the seeker process for this development, just with all the outside agencies that we are going to be dealing with, as well as city engineering and city DPW. We'd like to get all those comments and then coordinate them together. It just makes for a smoother, smoother path of entitlements. But, again, excited here to answer any questions you have or any feedback that you could give and hopefully continue the process down the road. Thank you.
Just so you know, there'll be no vote tonight.
Okay.
At all, for anything, because it's a preliminary hearing only.
Yeah.
Okay.
But could we open seeker and do that even if it doesn't?
I cannot do any of that?
Got it.
Okay. You didn't, if you had communicated more with us, we might have been able to, but no?
Apologies.
It's okay. No, no.
Yep.
We wanted you to be here.
Absolutely.
So that the board can see what you're doing.
Yeah.
They have little or no knowledge of, of this.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're sharing tonight.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure.
No problem.
So we can move the process along. Yeah, move the process along so you can get received with your project.
Thought I'd ask.
That's okay. If you don't, you don't ask, you don't get, right?
Exactly.
Good move. But there is some issues that we'd like to go over with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
First, before we do that, do you meet the code on parking?
Yes, we do. 24 spaces required. Sorry, I didn't mention that. 24 spaces required, 35 proposed.
Are provided.
Yep.
And you'll have that on the ledger?
Yeah, absolutely. It should be in our zoning table up there.
Okay. The easement, you said Monroe Muffler has an easement as well?
No, if I did, I misspoke on that. There is no easement over this at this time. We're proposing an easement because we don't want to cut off shared access to the rest of the plaza. It's not our intention, even though it runs through the property. What we have is our building within that 25-foot easement, and we, we couldn't develop a site with a building inside an easement with the possibility of it ever, you know, needing to be built. So, we were hoping to work, and we're continuing to work with city staff. We were actually just made aware of a project that's going on down here that we weren't aware of until as of almost two days ago. And we actually contacted their engineer at the request of the DPW superintendent and asked them if they saw any issue with our development. Now, the only thing I have right now is not from their developer, but from their engineer. They said they don't plan on using this access, and they don't see any issue with removing that and putting it, as long as we put it over the shared access here. Because when him and I talked on the phone, they do plan on using this shared access for the Middletown Commons.
Okay, and is that an easement that's recorded that allows them to drive through your property?
Uh, we would propose one of those, so we would have to, we would have to provide that easement, yes. There's nothing there at this time.
Okay.
Nothing in place at this time.
So, there's, there's no shared easements at this time with anyone?
So, that's correct.
Any of the properties?
Correct.
And are you going to continue to allow Monroe Muffler to use that easement or to the proposed?
Yeah, we had no, no intentions of cutting them off from it. I, I think it's being used that way today, so they should be able to use it today. Our, the applicant doesn't have any issue with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Would they need to do a traffic study? That's going to be up to the engineer to determine that.
We're going to develop escrow. Our engineer's going to look at it, CPL, our engineer that represents the Planning Board in the city.
There was one done recently with Dunkin' Donuts over that way, so maybe they can access.
And share that.
Yeah, O'Reilly's like at peak trip, 14, 14 peak trips, or very, very low user. But I can understand when we work, is it CPL?
Yeah.
Engineer? Okay.
Yes.
We'll work with them, whatever they need, we can provide.
We'll also probably require a right in, right-hand turn in, and a right-hand turn out only.
To limit this to right in, right out?
Yeah, instead of crossing.
Yeah, that's a double yellow line.
Well, they're only entering off of, off of A-Bizx. There's no entrance off of Dulson, right?
There would be.
There would be.
Into A-Bizx, and then into their property.
A-Bizx, nothing.
Yeah, but A-Bizx would be a city street. Well, actually, there is a controlled intersection at A-Bizx. Yeah. Where Taco Bell is. Right. He's calling it A-Bizx.
We were calling it the unsignaled version of it.
It's not, yeah. It's on, it's on, yeah, it's on maps as A's, A-Bizx and all that. But he's coming off of that, not off of Dulson.
Going through his...
To go into his parking lot, correct?
No, we're proposing...
No, he's coming off of Dulson Avenue.
We're proposing to come off of Dulson.
Yeah, but onto A-Bizx, not directly into your parking lot.
I'm sorry, I'm not...
Onto the access road.
But, keep in mind that...
No.
Oh, yeah, we're not proposing a new, a new access on Dulson.
Right.
Dulson.
No, yeah, they're going on to...
We're proposing to use, yes, yes.
The existing road.
The existing road.
That's what I'm talking about, right.
We know, we know that with New York State DOT, is this city controlled, this portion of 17M, or is it state?
That might be state-controlled.
State-controlled, because I know that with, the way that New York State DOT is, we would have, they would be an interested party because we're on their road. So, seeker, they would have the chance to comment. But we weren't proposing any upgrades, any to touch the shared access, access drive whatsoever, so.
Just let me clarify something. That road is not a road. That road is really on their property and only on their property. It's called driveway, technically.
A-Bizx is a driveway?
Well, yeah, we're calling it A-Bizx for, for clarification. Whether that name really is that, I'm going to tell you, we don't really know.
Okay.
Okay? But what we do know is that is on their parcel. Everybody's been using that as a road since that mall went in there, okay? So, they're going to allow that to maintain as a road. They don't have to. They could shut that off, and that would be their driveway, and that would be their entrance from Dulson Avenue onto their parking lot.
So who maintains the road?
Good question.
Yeah, if it's the plot, these are the exact questions that we were trying to figure out with this, because usually you don't see shared access coming across private property.
Right.
We would continue to work with city staff and whoever, DPW, that, that had any questions on the legality of that driveway, or who's going to use it.
Why wouldn't you guys want to deed that to the city? Like, I'm just curious.
Absolutely, a potential we could.
But I mean, I'm sure you need to have a certain stormwater, has to be a certain width, has to, in order for the city to take it over.
That's if the city wanted to accept it.
Okay.
And we're, we're definitely considering if that's a possibility. That's exactly what DPW had, had their thoughts of potentially straightening the road. Obviously, I don't think we want to rebuild the road because of, it's already there, it's already in use. But we understand the city has certain, certain standards that if they were to take the road, essentially, we'd be deeding a, a large part of our property to the city and developing, you know, the rest of it. And we're, we're tight on the site to begin with, anyway. We have a five-foot tall, 130-foot-long retaining wall off the back of the site because of the grade that's there. So, if we push any further onto our site, we might lose the viability of a project because the building, and O'Reilly's obviously is a, a parts company, so they have to have proper truck circulation into their site. And we fought with the truck turning analysis to get them back out. You know what I mean? That's our, we're trying to maintain safe, efficient access for our patrons while still being able to have a clear load unload zone. And we have, you know, jurisdiction of our own trucks, it's their trucks, third-party drivers, but their vehicles, so they can load and unload when necessary. But their turning movements, obviously, are dictated by our site plan.
I mean, there is a controlled intersection here to, to the left of the plan.
Absolutely.
Taco Bell is and everything. There is a light and everything. There's a controlled intersection there also. If they maintain the access road, they can use that, too.
Yeah, and I think O'Reilly likes this site so much because they have the access here. No one's going to come to an auto parts store that they have to go through the intersection further down all the way across the bottom of the site and go there. But, and like I said, we're, we're going to continue to work with the other developer on the, to the, I think it's the southeast. I know that there's something of, similar of that plaza that's down there going just to the side of it. And they had told us that this was, they didn't know about, that it came across our property either. So, we're finding it out, we're willing to work through it, whatever we can do.
And you've been in touch with Mr. Twill, our Commissioner of Public Works?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I have.
Are there current any markings on the road right now, since you rode just over there on the A-Bizx? Like, is there any current markings, like, as a, a line or anything?
Stop bar, maybe, and a stop sign. I'd have to check again. It was, it was dark by the time I got there.
And your trucks that come in, are those the big tractor trailers?
No, it's their own actual, they have their own style truck that fits their prototypical site, you know, right around an acre. It's compatible to like a WB50, WB62, somewhere right in between. I think it's 55 foot, where your average is 67. Yeah.
Mr. Madden, you had a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thereon, do you have any questions?
No, I'm going to wait till we get a little further along.
Mr. Wells?
You think you're going to require a pork chop there or something like that, so they don't go left?
Uh, I got to look at it a little closer. I mean, it, it looks pretty accessible for us, you know?
Okay.
Not, we're not going to be able to fit into everything and be able to turn around, so this might just be a, a nose-in and back-out situation.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Would it be like Dunkin' Donuts, how we had them put that pork chop there?
Yeah, I mean, maybe a mountable curb. I don't, I got to look at the plans a little bit more, and I can supply him with the, the turning radius to see if we can match what's going on with his trucks, so.
Yeah, if you have a standard truck, too, we can actually put it in the software and drive it.
Yeah, I got, I...
I know it's not the, not the same, but it's...
No, I do. I have the, I have the turning radius and all that stuff you need to throw in there, so I'll get it to you.
We'll also need a architectural rendering of what it will, will look like?
I'm sorry, I brought one.
We actually have one.
Yeah, so this is just the preliminary where our architect puts together the O'Reilly building. It's your typical O'Reilly red and O'Reilly green out in front of the site. The back of the building would be the south exterior elevation where you can see the extended retaining wall. It's essentially five feet of exposed foundation for the length of the building, and then 50 feet of retaining wall for the pavement areas. Any feedback on the preliminary elevations would, we'll take it, go to O'Reilly and their architect and let us know your thoughts.
And what is it, gray or white?
It is, so it's stuck-to-rock panel color. So, it's more of a gray. It would be, so it is a metal building, and that's that grayish with the O'Reilly red and green out front.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Any questions? We've been working on it, and we've been asking questions about the road and trying to get things squared away, and they're, they're getting near that point. That's why we invited the gentleman for a preliminary, so that you could now see it.
Dave?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Can you go back to the site plan for one second?
Yeah.
You said that there is an easement across the parcel for the city of Middletown. Where on the parcel is that easement?
It's going to be a little bit easier to see on here, I think, if I hold it. So, here's this property line, which matches with this property line. Essentially, 10 feet of our building corner falls in it. So, this, these two lines right here are the 50-foot easement to the city of Middletown.
And is there a sewer easement as well?
There is. Across the site frontage, there's a 20-foot sewer easement. That's correct. Which our, our parking does fall in, which are lined up with, I think that's Monroe there. But we needed the additional parking, and we understand the, the risk that's associated with that.
So we'll need some type of agreement that would allow us to dig it up in the event that there's some kind of emergency?
Yep. Understood.
That, too, the Commissioners is also working on with them.
So the, the correct direction for the road to continue that conversation is to work with DPW and wait for engineering and their comments as well, or is...
That's right.
That's, okay.
Yeah, get everyone on board on the same page. As far as the road, if you guys are going to work out some kind of easement that everyone can be included on it to allow access.
That would be the, I, what we were thinking, the preferred method, correct? That would, it's, it would essentially be getting the three parties that would be involved, our su, well, and the city of Middletown, but us, Monroe, with the developer.
Right.
For this, and then the city to agree for shared access.
It's totally up to you.
Wouldn't they also need the other one as well, because they're the ones currently using it over by the day school? Is that under, that's not under common ownership?
I don't know whether they have to be included, though. If the, the parcel owners that are adjacent to that area, they're the ones that have to...
Right, but if...
Agree to it.
The other ones are already using it.
I, if they open it up and have shared access amongst themselves, I'm sure that someone's going to pass through it. It could be someone coming from the, the controlled intersection that has, you know, nothing to do with the property, and they get lost or whatever, they're going to come around and go right through their shared access. So, I, I don't know how much, how many property owners you could have involved in it.
All right, well, we can talk about it.
There's nothing currently stopping somebody from driving down A-Bizics Drive and making a left onto Dulson, is there? Other than-
Because it's really, essentially, no one knows what it is.
Other than against the law, though?
Yeah.
Because you're crossing over a double yellow.
This, this, this access area has just been used. For, you know, the person that owned the property just never blocked it off.
Yeah. Understood.
Somewhere to where, in the development of the, of the mall area behind it, it just got built, and they've used it.
Great fire access.
There you go. Yeah. Everyone-
And maybe that's why they had to do it.
We don't know if anybody had to do it, it just showed up.
Back in the day, that's where Middletown used to have the football games, so, on that field, so that's, that's essentially where we had the football games.
Yeah, Wilson Field. That's 100 years ago. No offense. I played there, so I know.
That's probably why they created it, Tony.
I don't know. Uh, any other questions? Guys, okay, so, we'll, we'll have more as, uh, the month comes on, and we'll see what happens in the next 30 days or so.
Yeah, I would just, one thing to just clarify with that drive. We had the opportunity with where this is, I just, just thinking out loud here, and just wanted to see the, the applicant's willing to give, and that's why we're working with, with this drive. Nobody wanted to put a new curb cut onto Dulson Avenue, we wanted to avoid that, we know that's not going to help, so. Anything we can do to get this to work with the adjacent property owners, we're willing to do. I just wanted to say that, that was our only other option without figuring out the legality of this, was just punching a new driveway onto there and dealing with DOT. So, I hope we can just find a way to work that out between all the parties.
Well, I still, I still think you're going to have to notify New York State DOT.
Oh, they're going to know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I don't even know if that's an official curb cut.
Yep, and that's exactly why we want to have the meeting to get it started, get that conversation moving.
Right. We started.
Yeah, I, I think having everybody on board, though, to go to DOT and say, hey, look, this is beneficial to fire access, this is beneficial to the, uh, the developments that are going on down here to maintain this, or the applicant's just going to submit a new highway work permit for a driveway. And then you're going to have, because there's also a lot here, you're going to have new curb cut, new curb cut, all the way down where they can be utilized for shared access, so. Appreciate the time.
Okay, anything else?
No, just, uh, you know, if you want to get this project moving along, just, you know, make your submissions, get in touch with everyone, and keep proceeding forward, get in touch with Martina so we can get our engineer involved and get an escrow set up.
Great.
Okay, good luck. All right, to the end of our agenda, adjournment, I need a motion. Mr. Britto?
Second.
Mr. Higby? All in favor?
Aye.